Approving our minutes from the April eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting clerk interviews. I'd like to... Everybody that's on that committee has their minutes there. Accept a motion to approve the minutes.
I make my approval of the minutes, April eighteenth. Support?
Support by Bader. All in favor?
Aye.
Through being no further business, I look for a motion to adjourn as a finance personnel committee.
Motion out.
Motion by Bader. Support by Chapman. And we adjourn. Mr. President, all yours.
Okay. This way, we'll call a three-year board meeting to order at seven oh... vocal?
No.
Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Saturday, President Fodley.
Here.
Chapman.
Here.
Clark, here, is that you?
Here.
Hyland.
Here.
Cruz.
Here. If this time I accept a motion to approve the agenda of May ninth, two thousand and thirteen, as presented, I'd like to actually amend the agenda. We want to change the approval of bills for prepaid of thirty-two, seven, twelve, twenty-four. This will be payable or is that going to be...
Yeah, we don't need them.
Okay. And then, okay, so total approved would be forty-two. The total payable would be forty-two, seven hundred and forty, and forty-four cents. Oh, with, I'm sorry. The total approved would be forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine, seventy-seven. Yeah, we had a couple last-minute additions to this. And then, I'd like to add a couple of items to the action items. First, B and G, hire a part-time DPW employee. H, EVIP, four. Part three. Doubled that. I, remove unsafe sidewalks. And then, in old business, add an item C to addressable light ordinance. And we also would like to change on the very top of the agenda, from May ninth, two thousand and thirteenth, to read Thursday, May ninth, two thousand and thirteen.
Everybody else does, except you guys.
Oh. Well, ours is the only one on Monday. Ours is the only one that says Monday.
You guys all have Mondays. These guys have Thursdays. I like them better than I like you.
He's trying to confuse us.
Yeah.
I was going to change the calendar. And if I don't accept a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
By Fodley. Support by Bader.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. I'll accept a motion for approval of the minutes of the April eighth, two thousand and thirteen.
I have just one question on that. You notice on the very last page, it says, "The next director of board meeting of the village will be April the eighth," and that was the eighth we had meeting. If you look on this agenda, look on the bottom, it says to be announced.
No, I'm talking about just the minutes from the April eighth.
Yeah.
That's your incorrection.
Should've been, yeah. Should've been May ninth. Should've said one day.
No, it should've been May ninth.
It should've said May ninth thirteen.
Right.
May thirteen.
Yeah.
Should've said, "May thirteen."
Just a correction.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Nice question.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Would the amendment support?
With correction.
Any support? Motion by Bader. Support by Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion. Any public comment? We'll move on to reports. Scott couldn't be here. He told us the other time because of his...
He went to his daughter's... Class with his dog, Alpina.
Josh was going to be in his place. Josh is out on business right now. So, if anybody has any questions on the report, we can try to address them or ask Scott later. Anybody should have a copy of the report?
What's a B.O.L.?
B.O.L.
B.O.L.
Okay.
Any questions or comments on Scott's report?
No.
And we'll move on to Diane's DPW.
Everybody should have a copy of the DPW operations. Nothing out of the ordinary. The softball fence is complete. Bathrooms were opened up. Out put the Wi-Fi in. Streets have been swapped. I don't know if anybody's seen on Facebook, the pile of dirt. We, I estimate about thirty-five dirts of dirt we took out the streets. And that's only one tank sweeping. Turning lots and lots and lots of waters up. In Cory Hooksmo's yard, that number eleven is where we had the water main break. It's all back together. The yard's all black, dirted, seed mulched. Other than that, any questions?
Sam, I see M.D.O., or the county patch, that hole on the corner there. Do we know if they're going to take this on anymore of that, or is that...
The last I heard, M.D.O. was sending somebody down with a video cam to videotape the sewer drains to see if there was a crack in the drains. Because the dirt seems to be going down, and it's got to be going somewhere. And that's a lot getting... When M.D.O. gets back with us, they get back with us.
They will. Guaranteed.
Guaranteed. Take Mr. Cruz, he knows more than I do, I guarantee that.
Suit. Open suit. No, they will. They will. We'll make sure they address it.
Standing down the well, Doug.
No.
What is that?
That is, we have a permit to pull a little bit of fifteen cubic dirts of sand out of the lake right there so Lyle can use the D.O. They started working on it.
Okay. I wonder what that was.
That's what it is. That will all be in next month's report.
And I, one comment on the softball fence, I'd like to thank everybody that helped. Brad, everybody came and helped here at all. Sam came in on the weekend on his own time and worked on putting the cap on. So, everybody came together, the project turned out great, and I just want to thank everybody that was involved in that, so.
And I got the first softball homerun that was hit on the fence.
Yep.
And all the girls signed it. And I got it down where my desk.
Good thing we moved last night.
Yeah, that's whatever.
First inning, Lexis.
Now they're putting it right in the back of the pickup.
That's whatever.
So, we're going to move the fence?
Or raise it?
No. Okay. Any questions for Sam? Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Why, campground?
Well, since I came on site, I've been busy picking up leaves. I fertilized the park. Cleaned up the high water line three or four times along the park. We, I put some lattice work up on the bridges today. Got one to finish up. Sam brought me a bucket of dirt down to fill the little spot behind lot ten. And...
Player pit rings.
We've installed a player pit ring. So, I have been busy. I cut the grass, most of the grass, twice. One area, three times.
And that's without our help. He's been, this is when he come up with, he's her rate up worker.
And I stayed there cleaning the bathrooms out the morning first out here, doing scrubbing down and so forth. Other than the fire pits, I've got to clean those up, so. My computer's up and running. We've taken two reservations tonight on it, through the, I'll let. And there's a few bugs, and I've talked to Cory, and we'll be working on those.
And I'd just like to thank all of those. The new reservation system's been a little stress on everybody. So, everybody's hanging in there and working through it. It's going to work, and we're going to get there, but.
It's going to work, but a lot of bugs should be going.
Everybody's sticking together on it. Absolutely. I don't think they can for that. We expected that with the whole system, though.
I want to personally thank you for all the work he's done down there to save the DPW guys. He's done a ton of work.
Let's say some thank yous for other times. It looks good. I was in the park today with him, and it looks really good.
Responding, but I have one, I'll take care of that on the president's report along with any other correspondence.
Mr. Cruz, could I ask a question regarding reservations for the pavilion, not necessarily the campground? I know you guys touched on it before. Has there been some kind of a calendar or something like that devised? And I'll tell you why I'm concerned. We have our family reunion down there every year, and it was my understanding that someone, we take a collection amongst the family, and the funds are taken to whoever takes the reservation and reserves the pavilion for us at a certain time every summer. And I guess I was just concerned, if I need to get in touch with the family member, if there is a record of that, if you could just clarify that for me?
What do you mean by record, please?
Well, if, if we're indeed reserved, if my family's pavilion reservation is...
Who did you call?
I didn't.
Who did you talk, who did somebody talk to?
I'm not sure. That's, they've always taken care of it before, and I just didn't know with this...
I need a name. I've got a, I've got a calendar down there with all reservations on it, it's patched up.
So, somebody probably came down from my family and spoke with you personally, then...
Who's your...
They might have.
The forest? The forest? Do we, I hope you did ask somebody.
Yes, yes, that's taken care of.
Thank you.
Yeah. That was taken care of.
Well, since we're on the subject, I'll address that for a minute. We, we've talked with us after the confusion that the chamber had, and we developed the plan that we've got a calendar that we've kept in-house. During the off-season, the clerk will take care of reservations. During the camping season, Lyle will take care of the reservations. And that should pretty well clear up all of that.
Thank you.
Could I ask something about that? Is there a way that can be posted on the website, so like anybody that may want to reserve it throughout the year can see the spots that are already taken? Is that something...
For the pavilion?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Why?
I don't know if we could put it as an interactive type thing that easily.
Right.
We can look into some of that kind of stuff and see what that option is. It's probably the easiest thing to do is just call at the dates.
Okay.
But something we can look at and talk with Michigan's computers and see if...
We may be able to get it on online res, in part of that system too, I don't know. Do you summarize?
Right.
There may be an avenue to do that.
Okay.
Number one, the streets, Rob?
Um, we met with Shaver Lighting Company this past week. They brought over a fifty watt, fifty-five watt LED lights to replace one of the streetscape lights on the eighty-eight. The light that we replaced is right in front of Pat Insurance. Originally, it was a hundred watt light bulb. It's now a fifty-five watt LED light bulb with the same amount of lumens, which is the amount of light produced, but now it's shining down towards the sidewalk. Hopefully, well, it will, lower our energy cost, because currently, we're kind of spending twenty-three thousand dollars a year for just all the hundred, all hundred and forty-one lights in the village itself. We're testing that out. So, anybody that's out there, if you're driving at night, look at it, tell us what you think. Go to our page, and if it's too bright, you think it's not bright enough, see what you think of it, and we can tweak it. We can make it brighter, we can make it less bright. But once we buy all the light bulbs, we're kind of into it, so. That's for the streetscape. We also have a hundred and seven of the Cobra headlights on the outskirts of the village. A Cobra headlight, someone asked me, well, it looks like a Cobra head. It's the traditional lights you'd see. We have a hundred and seven of those. We're also going to convert those over to LED. Again, same amount of brightness slash lumens, but with half the energy usage. It's hard to dictate how much exact energy we're going to save, because the Cobra headlights all have different wattages of light bulbs in them, so we can't say it's going to be X amount of dollars. But conservatively to say that if we switch every light bulb out, and we're conserving energy at, at a ratio of half, then hopefully, our energy expense in the upcoming years will be half as low. We are having an ongoing situation with consumers. I believe Ken's going to address that in the president's report. He can tell you about that. Sidewalks, again, that's on item I, so I'm not going to address that right now. That will be addressed on item I on action items. And that's it. Any questions for Rob?
Yeah. Rob, on the bulbs for the, the lights in the streetscape, are there choices for like, like different color, like an amber type, or the, or is it just, just the...
The amber that you're speaking of now is the high, the high-pressure sodium.
Okay.
And we're doing away with those, because if you look, most of the light goes up and not down.
Right.
So, it's going to be all switched out to LED.
Okay.
And if you look, go in front of patents, you can noticeably different, even if you're driving down the road. There's something wrong with that light, it looks different.
Right.
What's not right with this picture?
Right.
But eventually, they'll all be converted to that.
The only way you would change the lens, the cover, would be to change the whole unit itself.
Got you.
And they're custom making the inside of the light fit what we already have.
Okay.
So, we have the clear ones on all thirty-four of the streetscape lights.
Right.
So, you're still going to get the clear light.
Okay. That's, thank you.
I think that's what you were asking.
That is, thanks.
Yeah.
Any other question?
Thank you, Rob.
Rob?
Sew and water, as Sam stated, he is currently turning on multiple season residents as they come in, sparing everybody back out for the summer. All the meeting reading, reading has been done and has been submitted for, for billing. Mentioned over live, done by Cory, he's got a six-inch main broke, he's got that all fixed and seated. He's going to start flushing all the water system here real soon, and there's going to be two new services being hooked up real, real soon. One is Chris Corbett, and one is Jerry LaBalle. Another, and everything's going pretty good.
Any questions for Rob? Thank you, Rob. Bill?
Uh, James Scott today said that much of her time in the last month has been involved in road patrol, and they've had, well, the chief had his time in already today, and he come in to do reports, and he took six complaints in the office while he was here. So, he's starting to get busy. There's a lot of people back that realized something wasn't right, and, you know, have been missing or been broken into or one thing or another. So, we're starting to get those complaints now. And that's it.
Any questions for Bill? Thank you, Bill. Denise, can you carry?
Well, there were a few different emails. I haven't responded to any of them, because I figured I'd go to the council and see if the president or whoever wanted to address those. But one letter was from a resident in opposition of the possible shed ordinance that is in works. Another letter was from somebody who wanted to remain anonymous about the house on Davis Street with the red and white chiming and stuff, how the gentleman appears to be diverting the creek behind his house and changing some stuff. And the, the person who wrote it was concerned about DEQ stuff, and so, so that letter is there. And then, another one was from a man just wanting to know about the campground. So, that's all I've got.
I think they've answered all of them. The one on the campground, I believe, was responded to, correct, Bill? Is that the one that kept coming back that it won't go through?
I have not.
I think that might be one.
Yeah, because I think I saw on...
We implied to him, and it won't go through, so until we, there's nothing, there's nowhere else to send.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
The shed ordinance, that letter was, we had a planning commission meeting last night, so that was where I didn't discuss, and the sheds were discussed. Davis Street, that was turned over to Scott, who called, "Hyena Soil and Erosion," who turned it over to the DEQ.
Okay.
So, I think they've all been addressed as far as we can address them.
Okay.
The email on the campground, I'm sure...
Yeah, it, it had a heading on it that said, "Your mail cannot be delivered."
Does that have one of the name on it or something like that?
Okay, yeah, that, that...
Tried twice to reply.
Yes, that was one that we were having a, an issue that Cory worked through with this, with the domain, but, yeah, that's been worked out.
Okay. But it's all like that.
Any questions for Denise? Thank you, Denise. Joe, finance personnel?
We were busy. We did our clerk interviews, interviewed six different people, actually, five different people, one back out last minute also. Pretty extensive interview process that we went through. We are going to make a recommendation to our president that he nominate Rachel Moser. We believe that she brings some good background in herself, some good schooling, with the possibilities of staying with us for a long period of time. Seems to be really interested in it, so that would be our recommendation to the president. Other than that, we've been taking care of business. Things are going smoothly, so.
And since she's present, wouldn't it be a good idea to introduce her to the board?
This is Rachel. We've met everybody but Mr. Chapman, Leela Clark, and Denise Bader. This is Rachel Moser.
Hi, Rachel Moser.
All right, good. That's we're all on the same page.
I shadowed.
There you go.
I shadowed.
She currently is, she currently is going to be working underneath Pat as a deputy clerk in Pat's contract and our ordinances and all. Pat has the ability to hire or recommend her to the hiring of a deputy clerk with the approval of the council. So, right now, Rachel has been kind of shadowing her. That I believe in further business, we will appoint her if we have some chooses.
Any other questions for Bill?
Other than that, the only other quick thing I would have is I want to say thanks to Cory and Lisa with Michigan's computers for all their hard work in getting our stuff up and going for us and working with, with Lyle there and putting up with us and all the headaches we bring, but thank you, Cory.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Leela?
You've pretty much heard everything that's going on down the park right now. We do have the Wi-Fi now and internet, and I guess that's accessible to anybody who so desires. Right.
That's where Cory was down there.
Right.
Worked well.
As long as it's working good and nobody abuses it, it'll continue to be open. And, yes, ma'am.
Is that password protected specifically just for campground?
No.
So, anybody that's in the park area has access to that?
Okay. Let me jump in here from...
Oh, go ahead.
When we, when we installed it, we talked about making it campground-only. With the system that Cory had, had outlined for us and getting into it, we found that it's actually a very good and large system. People right now can sit on the bridge and watch YouTube videos, email, do what they want. So, we decided to leave it open for parents, people going to the day parks and using it in that process. Cory has some software hooked into the back of it, we can monitor IP addresses, devices. We can see if somebody is abusing that system. And at that time, we can block that actual IP address or that device from our system. So, if we find that local surrounding houses are using it for their normal, everyday Wi-Fi, we'll block that particular one. But our goal or intention, I believe, right now is to leave it open so anybody visiting the day park can use it, anybody in the campground can use it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Leela? And we will move on to my report. Ah, easy one. Myself, and Rob, and Joe, and Rachel, and Scott, and Sam attended the Northern Lakes Economic Alliance luncheon. I picked the day, but I don't remember to tell you the truth. Last week, Thursday, I believe, anyway, and then when we were there, Ben Williams and three of the high school students were there too, so it was well-attended. It was very positive, if you ask me. There was a lot of good talk about the state of Michigan and how we're improving, so we were glad to be there. And at the same time, as Rob said, in dealing with consumers, in changing the Cobra head lights, consumers owns that entire system. And all the lights, the poles, it's their system. Their policy as of now is that nobody puts anything on their poles. So, we, we had a company that came up with, with LED lights, a cost to put them on and everything else, and consumers saying, "You can't put them on our poles." So, we're working with consumers on that now of finding a way. What consumers will do is they'll allow us to hire them to put LED lights that they want on the poles with their maintenance agreement. So, the two guys we're working with, I'll say, are, are working with us, in my opinion, right now, but it's consumers' policy that needs change. So, at that meeting, Greg McMaster's happened to be here, so Rob and I had a talk with Greg, and, and we're going to forward a letter to him, both an email and a, a written letter to him, that he can go sit down and maybe have a chat with consumers, because we're obviously not the only municipality that's having this issue of wanting to change the LED lights, so. We're going to, we're going to pursue that constantly until we get an outcome to it, so. It's going to take a while. The streetscape lights downtown, we can do what we want with those. Our lights, they're metered lights. We just buy the electricity. What we, what we'd like to have is an outcome on our Cobra lights is the same thing. We'll, we'll buy the lights, we'll put them up, we'll maintain them, we'll do everything, we'll pay for electricity, however they set that up, so. Just so everybody knows that it's a work in progress, and we're dealing with consumers very nicely.
It's a very slow process. Well, any of you ever had a power outage and called consumers? It's, it's a keyboard nightmare, and...
I see the frustration you just talking about it.
Yeah.
It is, so. I, I have a promise from the guy in Travers that he will be in correspondence with us weekly, so I'm going to hold him to that, whether it's don't know anything, got nowhere, whatever it is. We're, we're going to make sure we were in contact with him weekly, and we're going to keep pursuing it until we get an outcome. I sit on the planning commission, so I left the council planning commission at a meeting last night. The whole topic of the, the discussion was sheds in the village. And just so everybody knows, there's, there's just talk of we should limit the amount of accessory structures, outbuildings, I think you just were shed on property, so, so you don't have ten, or whatever that magic number becomes. There's just discussion, and truthfully, we're hoping for more public input than we got at the meeting. Brad was there, and Brad had some comments, the other gentleman, Ron did. Other than that, there really wasn't, so it's hard to figure out what does the community want, because we truly want to do, you know, what's, what's best for the entire community. So, it's still an ongoing discussion. I, I was hoping we could have came up with a little more last night, I'll be honest, because we've been talking about it for literally like a year. So, we're going to work on it for another month. We've got word out to other communities to see what they do, so just everybody let everybody know, we're, we're just really looking for input on what's, on what's best for the village to control that.
Is it just the number of sheds, or are you looking at sizes of sheds?
Right now.
Just the number of buildings?
Everything. I can tell you one, I think two communities that came back, joke or remember, I'll address it by the fact, that one was they're allowed two accessory structures, one can be greater than two hundred square feet. So, you can have a little garden shed, you can have two of them, or you can have one of them, and a detached garage, and, you know, do it by lot size. We have to find something that fits the village essentially.
And what about those that are already existing with baby grandfathers and...
Zoning cannot change anything that's existing.
Okay.
That, that stays.
That's the one that was...
Yeah. So, just talk about it, let people know, we, we really want some input.
And they can email you at the, um, Facebook email messages?
Anyway, the messages you have, because we really want input, because to be honest, I, I personally, I think they were too, like, we, we just, we just wanna get it done and move on, because it's gonna talk about a lot. I stopped today, because I saw the new little business in town was opening up, so they told me down in Fudgie's a week from Saturday they open up, so that's good news, another new business opening up town, they cleaned it up, done a great job, so. I think that's, I think that's, yep, I think that's real nice, that that's been with them. The last issue I have is a house in the village, it's the house, I, I apologize, I don't have the exact address, but it is, it's the house right next to you Denise. It's between Denise and it's two houses up from the church parsonage, there's a congregational church on State Street, parsonage, and then there's a vacant house, it's been vacant for a long time. It's came up on, on a tax foreclosure. The village has first right to refuse it. So, the, the village at this point could buy the house for thirty-seven hundred dollars, give or take, thirty-seven hundred. The only way the village can do that is, is for a public use, which would be to remove the blight, because I, I, I went through the house, um, it's, it's unbelievable, it goes that house, it really is. So, on Brian Graham's recommendation, it'd be thirty-seven hundred to buy the house, it's fifteen hundred dollars to remove the trees. It's, Bill, the, the fire department will then burn it once the trees are gone, at minimal or no cost there. It's sixty-five hundred dollars then to clean up the lot and get it back to seed, back to lawn. So, it's basically twelve thousand dollars. The first congregational church shows a pretty good desire to purchase that lot at that point, so within a month, next month, they will decide if they do. My recommendation, we, we get a letter of committal from the church that they will pay that amount for the lot, because as Brian said, the village, he sure does not want to spend twelve thousand dollars to remove blight and hope somebody buys that lot off of us for twelve thousand dollars. Because to be honest, a, a vacant lot there isn't worth twelve thousand dollars, probably anybody except the church or Denise or something, you know, right next to it. So, just so you know, next month's meeting, if the church wants it, we'll, we'll probably, we have until July fifth to act on this. So, that's a work in progress, the church knows about it, to their board meeting and, so there's discussion, I, I think they'll do it, but that's just my thought, so. Just so we know, that's on the table. I don't believe I have anything else. Any questions for me? Thank you. Let's move on to approval of bills. As, as Joe amended to, the, the total payable bills increased to forty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and forty-four cents, which increased the total approved bills to forty-three thousand, two hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents. I'll accept a motion to approve those bills.
I'll make that motion.
Motion to Clark, support by Chapman, go for Pat.
Batterby.
Yes.
Bively.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Clark.
Here.
Yes.
Miley.
Yes.
Sahir.
Yes.
Cruzey.
Yes.
Motion passed, all in favor. Any new business I'm not aware of? I have, I have no new business.
But could we ask, what, um, why the ten thousand dollar increase in the bills?
The ten thousand five hundred was the bill that just came in for Buckman's, for calling all of the, forty years of accumulation, put it that way, of, of concrete and paving, right, family park, out of the.
Storage area.
I don't wanna use the term swamp, but we call it the swamp because that's the area, but trust me, it's not a swamp, it's not a wetland, it's a field. Well, that's what that was for, and it just came in, so we thought, since it was a large amount, Pat thought we should address it right now and move on.
Half, half of that bill was built into local streets and the other half into water, where it came from, so.
Let's move on to action items. I have a letter from, I have a change of date of resignation, and we'll explain more of that later, but it's because of a change in our resolution and how we hire a deputy clerk and we'll, we'll get on with that in a minute, but for now, this is a letter from Pat, dated April thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. Dear council members of the village of Central Lakes, I would like to amend the date of my resignation to June twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. I will still be available to help the new clerk at any time if they run into a problem, thank you, Pat Marshall. So, I would accept a motion to accept Pat's new resignation.
I'm all in.
Motion by Chapman.
I'll support.
Support by there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. As Joe said, there's been the recommendation that we appoint Rachel as our deputy clerk while she's working with Pat, so I would make the recommendation to the council that we appoint Rachel Moser as our deputy clerk. Now, second. Seconded by Chapman. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Rachel. Sorry, Rachel. Now, the, the reason all this has came about that way is, is because in addressing hiring a new clerk and all that, we had Brian Graham look at things and truly the way we appointment and all that, and as anything changes over time, it had. So, Brian rewrote it, so you have the new ordinance in front, ordinance number four of two thousand thirteen, which is the nomination by village president, appointment by village council, and it states the terms of how we do it, but what will happen in the future is, anytime we nominate a, a new clerk, not, not, not renew their term. It'll be for an initial period of ninety days, then at the end of the ninety days, if the board so chooses, we will appoint that person at that time to fill out the, the remaining two-year term, because the, the clerk's term runs concurrently with the president's term and, and gets reappointed along with the president by the board. So, after those ninety days, whenever that period ended, that clerk would then be appointed to take it to that date, coincide with the president's term. So, that's what, that's what this new ordinance sets up. And the ordinance doesn't take effect till forty-five days after the date of its adoption, which is why Pat so graciously agreed to stay on, and Rachel agreed to come on as deputy clerk to get us to that time period. Yeah.
We, we found when researching this and getting into it, one, the original ordinance, uh, that said how we appointed our clerk didn't follow state statutes, and, and it was lacking only in the terms of timeframe. We said that for a certain timeframe, but it didn't actually follow state statutes, so we had to make that change anyways. Um, so while we were making that change, we put in the ninety-day trial period for it.
Password is number. So, at this point, I'll supersede, take a motion to, through ordinance number four of two thousand and thirteen. I'm gonna make that motion. Motion by Chapman.
Order.
Support by Clark. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. This is just a notice for us, correct, Pat? Have we adopted the order?
I'm right. Put the, the two in the paper and all?
Yeah, I think that's what he gave us, two in the paper. Yeah. So, you come to the little clerk during the appointment, or is that?
Is that this? I don't know what that is. No, I have to put the whole thing in. I don't know. Cause I have to put the whole two things, the ordinance certification and the whole ordinance, I'm not sure what that is. We'll check. If the lady can.
Yep. Okay, we move on, next one is the approved spending up to a certain amount for sliding apart. Belair Rotary has nicely agreed to give us three thousand dollars toward the purchase of a new sliding apart. Now, much to my shock, and I think everybody's, you can't buy a slide for a park for three thousand dollars.
No.
They're close to six. I don't believe, but we, 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 we have them here, it's, it's, it's what it is. So, what I would like the board to do, because, because, what I would like, and let me see if I can explain this, Greg, I, I'd like us to decide how much money we as a council wanna spend on a slide with three thousand. And then I would truly like, once again, to get some, some public input, I, I don't go to the park, I don't use the slide, I, I don't know what's the best, but if we're gonna spend that amount of money on a slide, I wanna get a slide that, that people really enjoy and will use for the next twenty years, so.
I'd first like to say I'm glad you don't use the slide.
If I do, I am not telling you about it.
You used the big one, Rob.
So, we, in, in looking at it, I, they're five to six thousand dollars, aren't they, Sam?
My, my input on the slide was from my granddaughter, and she picked out one that's roughly six thousand dollars. But, they started anywhere between five thousand and.
Up to twelve thousand.
Are we talking about replacing, is it the big one down there?
Yes, the old, the old stainless steel one.
Is it like?
It's got turned up corners, we beat the corners every, all the time.
It's not safe.
We got so much concrete showing, it's just, it's not safe. And the new slides will be color matched to all the new playground equipment too. You gotta remember, the steps were stainless steel and they rust, as they do. The new ones are steel with rubber coating to meet the new ANSI, which for who doesn't know what ANSI stands for, I don't remember, but American standards.
American standards, national standards.
Okay, yes, so, and, so, and all the steel will be powder coated, so you don't have the rust, and we can order it in any color we want to match, and it's all with recycled plastic.
If you want attached gizmos, it's a little more, so if you don't want gizmos.
She live more than gizmo.
Gizmos.
No gizmos.
Did the Belair Rotary specifically say a slide or?
Park, playground equipment, and when we looked, the slide is the one thing that's true.
That's nothing.
Why, no, no, the community thinks they'd rather see a swing set or whatever, they didn't say a slide. When we went and looked, we thought it is the slide that needs the most attention.
That's the only thing that has.
It has a memory place, the whole other set of playground equipment in there's part is, is moved.
Are you asking for a motion to set the amount at six thousand or higher?
If you're asking my personal opinion, I would say we set the amount not to exceed six thousand dollars from the prices I've seen on the slides in that way, cause what I'd like to do is I don't wanna have to come back to another meeting and another one, so if we approve up to six thousand and we get some enough input that we feel comfortable for the community and we say that's the slide we should get, we can move ahead and buy it, because we're into the park season. Yeah, we're, we're here.
I've got a question, just to clarify, so you said six thousand dollars, but not, so our match would be three thousand total of six, we're not gonna buy a twelve thousand dollar?
No, 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 total, yes.
Alright.
Equal six.
Yeah, so I, I, I said approved spending up to, when I said six, that was with the three thousand.
The match.
So, the total amount for the purchase. And so we know Belair Rotary, the one stipulation is there will be a plaque on it saying it was donated by the Belair Rotary.
Does that include the shipping and the taxes and everything else?
It, it probably depends on what company you buy the slide from, but.
Leila, we wouldn't, we don't pay taxes.
We're, we're.
Don't you pay shipping? Yeah, but we taxes them, yeah.
We would need to come out of, I mean, the one oh one, you would have to, that's the only place they would afford that.
Right, but I mean, it's. We would probably have to.
We would probably have to go into fund balance right now, um, to, to.
Well, right, that was, that was really how the year ends up. Yeah, you're right, right. That, that the one oh one's got so much in it until we get to the end of the year, but I mean, I, I'm saying the money is, if, 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 the worst case scenario is our budget comes all right where we said it was, and we use all the money we budgeted, then the three thousand would come out of the fund balance in the one oh one.
How long do we have until they rescind their three thousand dollar gift? I mean, do we have to move on this before end of summer or?
They didn't say, but I would assume they will, I would, I, I said I would like to do it soon, because we're into.
The summer.
The, uh, slide season.
But I have no knowledge on slides or, so I can't, I mean, I'll, I'll pass it back to you.
That's all we know, that's, where we look, that's, that's the price that we want, the eight foot five of this one's a eight foot, so.
So, I think if our park of recreations, maybe you decide that's, that's what ought to be, no, no, I don't see a reason. Yeah, Rob. And, 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 uh, in the interest of time, we need to do something to.
Thanks.
Yeah, we probably, I mean, I, I would just like the council to know where to spend it, it probably really depends on the budget, so you need approval again. Yeah, I mean, because we're budgeting, I think, and we're. I, I feel better as a council, see, one, so the, I don't know if we understand the three thousand dollars.
Three thousand dollars. Two, but not above three thousand dollars. Are you looking for?
You come with the, oh, that one.
That's the one.
Y'all know where in agreement to do it.
Take a motion, we spend three thousand dollars up to and not exceeding three thousand dollars. I think why?
By Tyler, support.
Support by Chapman.
All in for, for the amount of three thousand dollars for our, for the village's contribution to being up, not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Batterby.
Yes.
Bively.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Sahir.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yep.
Cruzey.
Yes.
I thought first.
Rachel.
These are kids.
Yeah.
The next item is change the meeting date. For a lot of years, it's been forever, as I was told, the, the village council meetings have been on the same evening as the school board meetings. And I'm not saying anybody's gonna attend any other meetings or what, but I just think it's an issue that we can resolve, in, in a small community, we, none of us should ever meet on the same nights, in my opinion, the planning commission, the township, the village, the school, we should all meet on separate nights. So, we can change that, we're, we're meeting the second Thursday this month, if, if there's any other recommendations, the, the second Thursday's okay with me, I guess, is what I'm saying, so if anybody has any other ideas, I'm, but I, I personally, we shouldn't.
Well, that's about the safest one, I can think of for the village.
It is for, I think I've talked to pretty much everybody, everybody says it pretty, it fits their schedule, no conflicts, and Pat and I checked the calendar and talked to the township, and there's nothing regularly scheduled then.
Yeah, there'll be someone in Lions Club who's, um, uh, down there.
I think that's, I think that's the first and.
The first, the first and the third. First Thursday of the month is when we have Lions meeting, yeah.
I accept the motion.
I'll make that motion that we do have it the second Thursday of each month.
Support.
Motion. Clark, support by Batterby, to change the meeting date to the second Thursday of the month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Next one is a request of a community garden up at the, use the term drain field area behind the laundromat. So, I have a letter from Amy Drake. Dear village council members, Central Lakes Community Garden is a newly founded group in the village. Our goal is to be able to provide residents in our village with a spot to grow vegetables during the fresh, fresh season that do not have space available to grow where they reside, to provide fresh food to our local food pantry for families in need, to cultivate relationships with neighbors, and reduce food costs for residents during this season. It is my understanding that the village has some property that may be available for a project such as this. I am writing to inquire if the village council will be open to the idea of this land being used for this project. I'd be much appreciative if our council members would consider this and approve, so I can get this project underway for the upcoming garden season. Thank you in advance for your support and dedication, sincerely, Amy Drake. Amy and Sam bet up there, so they've seen the property, so I've talked to Brian Graham a lot, I've talked to our insurance company about it, there's really nothing standing in the way that I've found anywhere of the village allowing them the use of that area. And it's been explained real well, and I correct if I'm wrong, that that, that's where the village's participation stops, and the fact that we allow them to use that space.
Sure, liability doesn't cover that.
It, it does, insurance company has no problem with it all, they said it happens in a lot of communities, it's a very common request.
What's currently there, is it just?
Just, just.
Nothing.
Just field, correct?
So, we just have to mow it then, so we're currently mowing it, correct?
No, that's a portion of the unmoated field. Well, what I, what I told Amy was we would go in, brush off and out for it, get it down to dirt, you know, other than that, that's where we'll walk away with it.
She gonna wanna put deer proof fencing around it?
I talked to her about that, and she's aware of that too.
It's a concern, so it probably is gonna be a necessity up there, um, I don't know about anybody else, but when your plants get eaten after all your hard work, it's not very pleasant and quite irritating, so.
It isn't a spot where it's way out of the way from everything that we would have to do up there. We're roughly two hundred feet away from everything that we have, so I don't see parking being an issue.
Is that the northern corner?
Bases or just?
Do that.
I would, I would just.
Next year, I don't know.
Do you have to access it by?
No problem, it's through the subdivision.
One on the north end?
Yep.
My, the only concerns that I would have at all going into it is just a year ago, we sent letters to all the surrounding residents not allowing use of that, which I'm all for community garden, I think this is a total separate deal.
It is.
But we should really want the traffic across that, and that's why I asked Sam where that would be located, and so there would be no traffic across our drain field, is, would be my only concern. But I support, I think it's a great idea.
That's, they know, they know there's no water up there, so like I said, I think we've been very clear about everything available. That's, they know, they know there's no water up there, so like I said, I think we've been very clear about everything available.
Right, I did mention something about possibly rain barrels, I think, when we were talking about it. I don't know if that was an issue, but I was thinking.
That would be fine.
Wonderful idea.
Fine, fine idea. Super great. I think it's a great idea. I really do personally.
But are you, are you planning on putting up a fence for the deer?
Well, right now, more likely this is going to probably kick off more next gardening season, or season, sorry. Because there's a lot more stuff involved into it than I originally, well. I knew there was going to be a lot, but not quite as much as I found out as I began to research it all. So it's going to take at least more than this season to get it all up and going in all reality. So I'm really just here to get approval, so we could start prepping once, you know, things like fencing becomes available for the next year's season.
Sounds like a good idea. This unused land, the village can profit from it.
I'd make a motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion that we approve them to use that.
Thank you.
Motion by, I mean, Bobby's support right there. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Um, I, I'd like to skip G just at that time because I think it'll make more sense if we talk about it when we get to I. If that's okay. So E, H is EBIT, which is Economic Vitality Incentive Program, which took place of revenue sharing. And there's three parts, we have to comply with all three parts or they don't give us our revenue sharing money. So part three is, it, it, it deals with, I could read it to you if you want me to, but it, it, it deals with, it's employee compensation. And it deals with, with how we fund our employees' retirement plans, what we cap it at. It deals with insurance and the premium costs and all that. So we have the option of either going through all those steps, which would change absolutely nothing we do, or opting out of the program by two thirds vote of the council. Last year, we opted out. My request to the council is that we opt out again this year. Any questions?
There's that little vector.
You know, because, you know, for, just so you know, for defined benefit pension plan with a maximum multiplier of one point five for all employees who are eligible for social security benefits, except where post-employment healthcare is not provided, the maximum multiplier shall be two point two five percent. For all employees who are not eligible for social security benefits, a maximum multiplier of two point two five percent, except where post-employment healthcare is not provided, the maximum multiplier shall be three point zero percent. And then currently we fall under that, I can tell you that. If you, a healthcare premium cost for new hires, so to a minimum employee share of twenty percent, or an employer's share of a local health care can cost shall be cost competitive with the new state-provided organized health plan on a per-employee basis. We checked that last year and we fall real close to even being in compliance with that if we chose to. But then the questionnaire, of course, it seems like anything the state has to do with, is the costs shall be cost competitive, so it's your guess what cost competitive is. So that's why last year, we just decided we're, we're comfortable with, with the way we have our insurance, the way we fund it. We're comfortable with our retirement program, which Sam and I just attended a meeting on that. We gave it through murders.
And you don't forget that.
A lot of information on it and they were shocked to learn that, that we are, that the state no longer wants unfunded anything. So a lot of people's retirement programs in municipalities are not one hundred percent funded. I think the guy didn't believe it when we left that ours is, as a matter of fact, we're overfunded. So we're, we're, we're pretty comfortable with, with the system we have in place. And I thought it was a great meeting, had you Sam?
Mm-hmm.
Because they explained it well. And compared to what other communities are saying, we're in great shape. So that, that, and for the same reason, last year, we decided to opt out of the program. By two thirds vote, we delve out the form and move on.
Good idea.
You want to pause it?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
No more questions. Motion by Clark. Support by Chapman to opt out of EBIT employee compensation, part three, as we will call pass.
Baderby.
Yes.
Bively.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Thayer.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yep.
Cruz.
Yes.
Pass.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, G and I, well, I'll kind of combine them with the ones I explained. It, it came to our attention and then I, I, I'll apologize, I, I truly didn't realize the condition of a couple of our sidewalks. I, I truly didn't. There's a sidewalk up along Maple Street from Chestnut to Howard, correct Sam?
Mm-hmm.
That, 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 that is bad. I mean, I hate to sit here and say it, but it's, it's, it's absolutely terrible. There's some sidewalks as you head west out of town on Old State on both sides of the road that are in quite disrepair. Sam put together a crisis. Now, if we were to go and tear these sidewalks up and replace it, the problem on Maple Street is, if you want to go start replacing them, we're, we're going to cut down some trees. Because the trees are pushing the sidewalk, I mean, there's nowhere to move the sidewalk around it, I mean, they're not, so. Then people, I don't think, want trees done, it's the same issue as you go up Old State. You know, there are some trees that would have to come down, healthy trees. The, the project to do both of them, correct or wrong Sam, is over twenty thousand dollars. Close to twenty one thousand dollars, which the village truly does not have enough budget. My thought today in talking with Joe and with Sam is we remove the sidewalks. For the Maple Street, we remove, there's a retaining wall right down along that whole block.
Part of it's probably three foot tall and any other of the places.
Whole place, people use it for parking, nothing else. It's not even part of their lawn. They all park out there. My thought there is we take the sidewalk out, we regrade it and we put gravel in. And then there's still a walking surface that people choose to. And up Old State, as far up as the sidewalks are good, which on the west side is up past Bill Coasters. Right, we have to replace some sidewalk. Sidewalk in front of Bill Coasters is a brand new sidewalk, I mean, new. The sidewalk between probably about where the basketball courts are.
Yep.
Two there is bad, that section truly needs replaced. So that sidewalk continues up there. And my recommendation is from the end of Bill, where it starts going in disrepair, is to remove it, let those people use it for lawn. And the same way on the other side of the street, which is probably Bill Wilsey's?
Little further.
A little further up, so it'd be Bill Wilsey, Ross Hickman area in there. And when they start going in that bad a disrepair, then we remove them, put blacker in and let the people plant them to lawn. Now, if two years from now, three, whatever, more money becomes available, people say, we'd really like the sidewalks, whatever the issue comes. I'm not saying the sidewalks can't go back, but I'm saying right now, we're, we're liable for the poor condition. I printed out the state statute, I mean, we are liable for the poor condition of the sidewalks if somebody gets hurt. And, and, and anything, anything bigger than that.
Rob, Rob Tyler has colored pictures of the sidewalks, anybody want to see them?
A vertical discontinuity defect of two inches or more in the sidewalk, a dangerous condition in the sidewalk itself of a particular character other than solely vertical discontinuity. If any of those have existed for more than thirty days before the occurrence of the injury, death or damage, and we knew of it, we're, we're in trouble. So like I said, it comes down to a financial matter. My opinion is the plan I just said. And, and that's where hiring, we thought about the cost of that and how do we free up help? Because the DPW truly is, it's that time of year and they're, they're behind. The spring came here right now and I was going into summer and we're trying to clean the town up. And they got, what, two new water?
Two sewers.
Two waters, two sewers to put in. We still have some, some spring cleanup, they've been up power washing the sidewalks, we did that cleaned up. My suggestion is, once again, in talking with Joe and finance and Sam, is that we hire a part-time DPW person for at least thirty days. Part-time, ninety-eight an hour, no benefits. We free up Sam and his two guys to go start working on these projects. And I would say for thirty days, because if we come back here in thirty days and say, it's working good, but, but we really need, you know, some more time that, that we discuss it again. But I, I just don't see how we're ever going to get done what we need done without this extra person to do the lawn mowing. If we hadn't, now they could have been doing the, the sidewalk pressure washing and all that. It's, we went the last time we years, but we always had a part-time person. And so we've gone this many years without an issue. It truly has become an issue of all the projects we need to catch up on. And the sidewalks is the one where I finally thought, maybe we should just, like the, we're looking at, we came up with about approximately five thousand dollars, Sam? In that one month period to, to, the cost of hiring an employee for that month to free up somebody to go deal with the sidewalks and then the cost of the fill. Sam and I are putting it somewhere around five thousand dollars for that month to address the sidewalk issue. Get, get the two sewers and the water hookups in and, and I'm not, I'm not sitting here saying we're going to do that within that month. But Sam promised they will try real hard and if they don't, we understand that, so we'll, we'll talk about it in another month.
How many hours a week are you talking about?
Thirty-nine.
Well, we need really good liability, we can't about.
I, that, that's what we did and we just.
We just don't have the time.
Even beyond it being an issue of money, it's an issue of do, do we want to go in and start cutting down these trees? You know, just for the sake of a sidewalk and it's, it's my other thought too, that, that our, our limited finances are better spent on the sidewalks we have that lead people from the park to downtown, from the downtown to the schools. You know, and we're, we're caught in a financial matter like a lot of villages are. And we concentrate our money on the heavier areas. So I would, I guess I would, I would accept a motion first to, we, any of the orders, do a first. I would accept a motion to allow Sam to hire a part-time DPW employee for one month. I make a motion to do that. His. Motion by Chapman.
Support.
Support by Baderby. That is the role call.
Tyler.
Yes.
Thayer.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Bively.
Yes.
Baderby.
Yes.
Cruz.
Yes. Thank you, motion passes. And then I would accept a motion to remove the unsafe sidewalks, specifically being the sidewalk on Maple Street from Chestnut to Howard. And the unsafe sidewalks on both the east and the west, north and south sides of West Old State.
In the section just up by, um, just that you spoke of by Bill Coaster's house. That that would be, that needs to be replaced.
From where the sidewalk goes in disrepair, which is about the basketball court up to Bill Coasters, I would, because we, there'd be no reason to tear that sidewalk out. If you have sidewalk, you have no sidewalk, that is sidewalk, is why I say that.
There's removal on the other side though, right?
And your sidewalk on the other side and, and two of the property owners, not correct or wrong, Sam, up to there, had their sidewalks removed already? Because they wanted, or asked if we would?
Yes.
Because they would rather have lawn than the sidewalk in the condition.
Which we have already wanted to remove.
So that's already been done. So if you drive up there, I think you'll all see what I'm talking about. I, I honestly believe at that point, that is our, our absolutely best option right now.
I would like to make that motion. Will you go ahead with this?
Motion by Clark.
Support.
Support by Baderby. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. I will no longer actionize, so this time I open it up to public comment. Any questions on? Thank you. In the old business. Does everybody have the letter that we would like to send to the Central Lake Chamber in response to their address to the council? Do you want to read that?
It's up to you.
What do you do?
Oh, it's, I can read it, you can read it. We probably shouldn't read it or somebody should.
The letter says, to Central Lake Chamber of Congress. After the chamber's president addressed the council in April, we feel it is necessary to let the chamber know that we are truly sorry for the inconvenience you had while trying to schedule events in Thurston Park. The village council, the clerk and the campground manager have discussed this and developed a plan to ensure this doesn't become a problem again. During the off-season, campground closed, the village clerk will accept reservations for the venue. During the summer months, campground open, the campground manager will accept reservations. We hope this will clear up any further complications. The village council is not in the event planning business. The Central Lake Village Council supports the chamber and all that it does for the village. When the issue of a car show and talk to chamber could be dissolved came from the chamber president directed to the council. We feel it necessary to address you, excuse me, we feel it necessary to address your concerns. The village council has never been part of or engaged in any talks, planning or negotiations of any car show. The village council will continue to encourage and support the chamber and/or any person or group that has a legitimate, safe event that could benefit our community. We will continue to encourage and support festivals, car shows, parades, flea markets, the Fourth of July festivities, winter events and any events that bring the community together in support of the village. We don't plan them, only encourage and support them. We apologize for any misunderstanding regarding the village council's standing on supporting events. We look forward to working with the chamber to help promote Central Lake, thank you, Central Lake Village Council. With council approval, we will send that out into the chamber. One motion to send it.
I'll second.
Motion there, second by Tyler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Our whole business issue is campground. The reservation system is up and running. We just wanted to make sure we're all in an understanding of how everything's working and where we're at and move forward. Um, everybody should have a copy of the Thurston Park family camping rules. So if anybody sees anything we need to change or not, let us know. Otherwise, these are going to be our written in stone rules. And we're moving forward. Correct that?
Ken, I got one in there.
Yes.
The fish clean in there, you said wrap it paper, get it on paper, wrap it in plastic and put it in a garbage can in the cleaning area. We've got a freezer in there. We want this stuff put in the freezer. And we freeze it and the day that the garbage truck comes in, I take and haul it out of the freezer and put it in the dumpster, so we don't have that on that leash.
So we don't deposit it, we want it placed in plastic bags tied and placed in the freezer in the fish cleaning room?
Right, right. And there's a, I've got a, a plastic size, uh, uh, sign right on top of the freezer. We started that three years ago and it's worked really well. We don't have that smell on there anymore.
I actually probably just take a call and I'll know.
We don't pay for it. We pay the flabber here. Check and see if it's standing up. What we're doing is all effects of some part that was on the shore. Was I?
Don't know, I don't, you guys weren't aware of the meeting where it said no site selection will give.
If you're not lying, you better be guaranteed.
Well, that's why I.
That's why you.
Says we don't guarantee sites, we're, we're best to make sure you get it. And other campground do the same thing, but I thought.
I, I, maybe, I don't think I have a better way to word it, because me, we do. I mean, I know it's not ironclad, it's, you know, like if, if a site falls in the water or is under two feet of water, but you'll, you'll say this is.
We had one kind of, uh, two years ago, Lot Forty up there, we had to move the individual one because the, the drain field plugged up and everything went over. That would be one of the scenarios that I was thinking about.
You're right now, if you're reserving online, you're picking out your site, that's why you're going there.
Right, right.
So you have to be guaranteed.
Can't guarantee that something won't happen.
Oh, I don't think that's beyond the scope of guarantee.
Yeah, that's exactly.
You can't guarantee your site to blow or anything takes off apart. I mean, I, I just, I don't.
Well, that's what I said.
I, I looked over some of the other campgrounds and they all include that. It's, it's just in case type of thing. Can you add more wording to it?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, I, I agree with what I'm saying, it just felt like, to me, if I look at it and I go online and I'm reserving the site and I say, I want that site and I pay you for it, it's mine. But it's not guaranteed. I mean.
You can report that.
I hope we can find a better way to word it.
Yeah, but due to unforeseen circumstances, not all selections can be guaranteed.
And now that, I, that, that, to me is better, it's like if something really strange happens, like the sewer backs up or something.
Tree falls.
That is your site. You paid for site number seven for those dates, you will have that site. But so we will figure out a better way to word it, is that acceptable?
Yeah.
Barreting.
unforeseen circumstances.
Yeah. So should we pick wording right now and then we move on? So we're going to change, no site selection guaranteed to say what?
Due to absolutely unforeseen circumstances or just, I don't know.
Is that a question?
Because you never know what could be, I mean.
That would probably cover it, because you never know what should be, I mean, that lake comes...
Absolute unforeseen word, where they're going to say it's going to be...
That lake comes up, and plus it's going to water.
Can we say that? Everybody knows that.
Then won't we say circumstances beyond our...
Can't guarantee a site, someone said, "Due to circumstances outside our control," no site can be guaranteed.
Definitely.
Get that guarantee at the end. Due to, due to circumstances beyond our control or outside of our control?
Beyond.
Or unforeseeable.
Due to circumstances beyond our control. And those sites can be guaranteed?
Yeah. You know, I don't, I would question that a little bit, if I'm sitting there looking at the reservation system, and I see that it almost says that we're not guaranteeing on that site when they're doing it, I would, I would maybe look at something more of...
Not their reservation, but their site, that might have to go from site three to five.
Yeah, I just had something, I'm like, telling them...
It's got to do, how about, in the event of unforeseen circumstances.
In the event of unforeseen circumstances.
Or we reserve their right to...
No, no.
Like in the event, right? If that's kind of saying...
Because then when someone sees, oh, the tree fall.
I went through earlier and looked at the reservation system and the other campgrounds that use that same system, and every one of them have a very similar type of disclaimer. We just don't want something to just pull plug out.
Right.
Maybe look at some of the other ones that are there.
Can we do that, because...
Yeah. I mean, I know, I'm trying to say, your site's guaranteed, unless we can't, except for, beyond our control, someone we need to save that, so I think we'll come up with something.
We can, we'll pronounce it.
We'll just, how about, we just agree that. Joe was worrying, and we'll look at some others, we'll come up with a better version. We don't like, we always...
Something that says weather-related...
Yeah, we know what we're trying to say, we'll come up with something different. Okay. So the other, the other, only other thing that's all of ours, the boss. Just so we're all clear on it, how many sites are available to be taken off the reservation system at any given time? Have we agreed to have sites? We get site, it's not waterfront site, we have to set that down, so we're all...
We initially set this when we sat and made these, that we said we would put five sites into the do-not-reserve list, or unreserved, but it wasn't just five sites, because it wasn't waterfront site. Right, excluding waterfront sites. And we said we'd leave them up to Lyle's discretion, or we wanted them so he could, give them a little bit of play within the campground, if I remember correctly.
I did put five of them off right now, because I'm not going to, my brother's here on Saturday, when I come back on Monday, I'll take them all. But I got to give Sam somebody where, and I'll list those on a note, a card on my door, so Sam will know where they are and so forth.
And just so you know, our thought on that one, with five sites, is, so we kind of look at that, and at the end of the season, we realize, while those sites are always taken, then we realize maybe we should have more available off the grid, and if they're never taken, then we realize maybe we should open those five sites up for reservations.
I don't want to take or put any more off the grid than absolutely necessary.
So someone comes in, and they have that option, so we see if that demand is there for people that come in and want a site, that have a reservation site.
In a busy time of the year, if we had one or two to drive in, that's my thinking.
And then they'll just watch it, that's what we do, we'll watch it for the season and gather some data.
Most of them have, because there's plans made already, so they would reserve.
We can, we can, we can talk about, I mean, I don't, I think we made a decision once that we're not going to...
There are no extended day discounts for the campground this season, in fact. So we all agree to this? Other than, and just so everybody knows, two people had already reserved sites before this had all taken place, so Lyle asked him, he said absolutely give them their discount, because that was what they came in with the understanding of, and we changed it after. So just so we know from this point forward, and then once again, we'll see how that works out through the season, so if anybody asks, Lyle did give them, and that's because they were reserved before this.
Prior to this, these people have long stayed, you know, I think that's something we got to look at. We want to encourage a revenue from five or six here of anywhere from two to three thousand dollars, I think that's something we got to look at, that I would recommend, maybe going at a thirty-day instead of the old fourteen-day, you know, this type of thing.
We have all that wrote out, too.
We all agreed to look at, but we, for now, there was...
That'd be Parks Committee, which we...
Yeah, but for right now, there is none. So just so we're all clear on that, we're not going to, we all agree, we need to keep an eye on.
We're just starting out with the new system, I think it'd be real good, let's just let it roll for a month, let's see how it goes, and then come back in to, if we want to tweak anything, then give it a little time to see how it plays. The only other thing I would have in the campground is, on top of the hill, consumers power trimming some trees, we got to get them in there some...
They come down, they walk down, they sent an engineer down, they looked at them.
He don't care that the limbs are on...
The crews coming to clean them.
Oh, they are coming to clean them.
They're coming, they just haven't got it in there yet.
They're like dealing with consumers, like, they're going to spend them guys too.
My concern there, go ahead.
Do you want to be there, take care of that leg?
I don't care how they do it, I don't know, it's down, it's obvious.
Like, climb the tree and grab their wire, is that really a liability issue? I mean, I'm just saying, if it's an issue...
They know they have a problem.
Then we deal with it.
They're there, they investigated it, they sent those other crews.
Lyle had a camper that wouldn't stay in that site flat here.
That's over thirty, that's over site thirty-five, and they just hesitate about that one.
Yeah, we'll keep an eye on it, and if we need to get a little reminder.
They could put, they've been there.
We'll give them a reminder.
We'll send the forestry crew out, that was the last word Lyle me got.
Yeah, it sounded like they were sending, really full.
We're all down here.
Yeah.
Okay, so remind me, we will, I'll make the whole...
Oh, they'll be here, I'm sure they'll be.
We will make sure that gets done, because it isn't that. Anything else on campground?
Uh, yes, but we didn't tell the board, the service has been switched over. Remember, we did, we approved the campground washroom upgrade last year? Our electric did it, that is all done, and that's when the tree trimming crew come in too, that's what started all this. But that service has been switched, so hopefully we don't overheat any breakers this summer and Fourth of July.
I'll make that work.
My microwave. Our campground lights are heater.
Our campground lights are heater.
When we decide, what we would like to do to get back to lights again, is our original thought was, let's do it all as one project, all the Cobra Heads, all the street skate, all of them. If we're not getting anywhere with consumers quickly, which, let's say optimistic and hope we do, but if we don't, we will probably go ahead and do the street skate project, which would include the campground lights, all our meter lights.
And that gentleman, he's been down to check.
He's been down, he's looked at it.
Chris has looked at them, and he will be sending the information to Rob, at all that.
If we have to split it into two different things, we will, but I think we really want to take care of our downtown lights and the campground lights, our meter lights.
And everybody look at that street light up there, with that LED, everybody from town look at it.
Look at it, and I...
Because we really need your feedback on that one.
I mentioned something to Rob and Sam, Sam's come up with a way, if we feel the light should be lowered, because when you look up, you truly, you see up into the light, and it's, to me, it's incredibly bright, looking up into it. We can lower the lights, Sam's come up with, we could lower that light for a week or two a month, without, we'll make a clamp that clamps the pole, so we can truly slide it down off of the side of the pole and hang it two feet over, and we just, we need to decide if we want it where it is, that wattage, less wattage, lower, so, like Rob said, well we do, we get one shot, and we go on the right. Moving on, the other one I'd like to bring up one more time, I've brought it up many times, and it keeps getting brought up, is the blight ordinance in the village. At some point, the council's going to have to sit down, take the blight ordinance, and deal with it. And it's just, it's a terrible task, I will say that, but I just think it gets brought up enough within the village, you know, people bring up why is this being done, why is that being done, why is the village being cleaned up, if we truly want, and the village wants a cleaner village, blight is the issue. I mean, I think, I don't think this village cleaned up personally, I really don't, I think it's, have a blight ordinance that suits the village of Central Lake and enforce it, and there are people that'll be mad at me before the night, so we're having said that, but I think that's just the truth of the matter, and we need a lot of public input on this, and if everybody in the village, I'll say, if everybody in the village loves it the way it is now, okay, we leave it, because that's what we're here for, is to do what the village wants. We can have our personal thoughts and our recommendations, but I think we truly need to look at the blight ordinance and make it fit the village of Central Lake, so it's not going to happen fast, but I think at some point, we have to take on that task, bring it to a meeting of the full council, and look at it, and maybe talk about it at every meeting for the next two or three meetings, and see where we want to go with it.
That would be something the planning commission wants to look at?
I thought we could probably have the planning commission input as well, like I said, the more, the better, because it's, it's an issue in the village, and it has been, and it's ongoing, and hopefully we're the council that deals with it.
The only one complaining would be the ones who are causing it.
Well, I wouldn't, I don't even want to say anything, I just want to say we need to find out what, what our village wants, and how we improve our village. The better our village looks, and it's the same way with sheds and all that, we all know, the better the village looks, the better the property values are, the more it's attractive to people to come to our village, on the softball fence, when we use, people will come into our town and see the better condition our sidewalks are in, the better everything downtown, it's just the whole, the whole big look of the village. Anything we can do to improve it? I think it's a big plus, so I'll probably, we'll all have the blight ordinance in front of us at next month's meeting, so we can at least start it, it's on the website, correct? But anybody who probably should take a look at it, download it, look it over, maybe make suggestions next month, there's not a lot there, but the things that need changed are going to be one ones to change. We'll just make one that works, and we'll go over it and move on. If everybody's in agreement.
Can I ask a question? I heard Joe say that the blight ordinance on the website, is it singled out on the website, as a few of them are, or is it under Central Lake ordinances?
We'll look right now, because to try and prove I'm not, I think it's under its own authority. If not, it's a chapter, it's a chapter in the village code.
I'm thinking it is two, but...
It might only be addressed as a chapter to the village. No. Should we make a motion to adjourn? No. Yeah, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Cart. Support by Tyler, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You adjourned.
There's a couple of them there, Amy, there's going to be underneath yard waste ordinance...